Everyone.
Dr. Mary Grace, Assistant Superintendent Educational Services. Good evening, Dr. Grace. Dina Mellon, Assistant Superintendent Human Resources.
Good evening.
Jessie Chavaria, Assistant Superintendent Administrative Services.
Good evening, everyone.
Tracy Golden, our Senior Director of School Safety and Operations.
Good evening, everyone.
Pinch hitting this evening, Anna Lee Williams, our Senior Administrative Assistant.
Good evening, everyone.
Mary Madrigal and Alina Avilar Roque are interpreters. Buenas noches. Janice, hello, Janice Cato, our Technology Support Technician.
Good evening, everyone.
Item 3C, Report of Closed Session Actions Taken. There are none. Item 3D, Adoption of the Agenda. Item 8A point three was removed at the request of administration prior to the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Philbeck, so moved.
Relus, second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Trustee Relus.
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez.
Aye.
Board Clerk Philbeck.
Aye.
Also vote aye, passes four zero. Item four, Special Order of Business. Item four A is AESD's 2021 Retiree Video. Dr. Christopher Downing, our Superintendent, will take the floor.
Good evening, Board Members. Today, we celebrate the retirement of thirty-three AESD employees. Okay. Thank you, Board Member. Today, we celebrate the retirement of thirty-three AESD employees. And in years past, we would host the Whammy Celebration to honor these employees for their dedicated years of service to the amazing AESD. The years of service of our honorees range from nineteen years all the way to forty years. And this evening, we would like to dedicate this time in our board meeting to congratulate, recognize, and thank all thirty-three of AESD's two thousand twenty, twenty-one retirees. And we'd like to honor them this evening with a video. Anna, if you will begin our video. And thank you, Board Members, for allowing us to honor our retirees this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Downing. I would also ask if it's possible to put that video on our YouTube channel or AESD archives for those who are joining by phone, couldn't see it, or would like to watch it again. I know it'd be one of those. Thank you, Dr. Downing. That takes us to, and I know, actually, as a matter of fact, I know that doesn't really give the full appreciation that we have for all of our staff who are retiring after all those years of service, serving our community and our students. So, we appreciate that, and it doesn't detract in any way from everything they've given us over those decades of service. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Item four B, School Reopening Update. Dr. Christopher Downing, Superintendent, Tracy Golden, our Senior Director of School Safety and Operations, and Alejandro Ramirez, Price Elementary School Principal.
All right, so thank you. We'd like to take you through a presentation that provides an update on our school reopening and some of the activities taking place across the district. So, next slide, please, Anna. We'd like to begin this evening's discussion with a review of the COVID data for Anaheim and Orange County. Next slide. So, this slide provides for you, again, the four-tiered system that falls under the California Safe Schools for All, and I should say, the current tiered system, ranging from purple, widespread, red substantial, orange moderate, and the lowest tier, which is minimal, or the highest tier, as is the case. So, Orange County continues within the yellow tier, or the minimal tier. And that is because, based on the most recent data, there are one point three daily new cases per one hundred thousand citizens. And again, as this process is starting to transition, in some of our later slides, we'll talk to you about an expected update from the state around June fifteenth. Next slide, please. If we drill down and take a look at the five ZIP codes of Anaheim, you will see on the left side, the blue bars, which represent the seven-day case rate. And as you can see, for nine-two-eight-oh-one, there are approximately one point eight daily new cases of COVID for one hundred thousand people. For nine-two-eight-oh-two, their last report was zero. Nine-two-eight-oh-four, one point one. Nine-two-eight-oh-five, point nine. And nine-two-eight-oh-six, which is one point seven. On the right-hand side, you will see the positivity rates. And again, all of these fall at one point three or less. And if cities, and in this case, ZIP codes, were to fall into the tiered system, all five would meet the criteria for the minimal or yellow tier. Next slide, please. And so, I'm going to ask Tracy Golden to share information about our district's safety plan guidance.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Downing, and I just want to kind of review the COVID safety plan that we have for the district. Right now, while the CDC has come out with some new guidance, the California Department of Public Health and Cal OSHA have not yet. California has announced that they are targeting June fifteenth for when they will anticipate many of the restrictions will be lifted. And they're also talking about those four tiers that we just talked about being eliminated. So, both of those agencies have kind of held off and are going to be announcing new updated changes around the fifteenth so that we will go ahead and update our district plan to make sure that it aligns with both the CDPH and Cal OSHA.
And Tracy, if we could just add, so often, community members, staff members hear that the CDC is making a new recommendation. We just want to point out that the CDC provides a recommendation, but it's the obligation of state agencies to provide guidance.
Correct. Both the state agencies and the county agencies are tasked with coming up with the public health and guidelines for businesses, and Cal OSHA also talks overseas the safe workplaces.
Thank you.
Next slide. So, this year, we will be having in-person promotions, so our sixth-grade promotions. But we do have them within our COVID guidelines, so they will take place outside and during asynchronous learning. And then, of course, we will have all our COVID protocols in place, so masks will be required. We will screen everyone upon arrival. We will continue to social distance. And we'll, you know, limit the exchanging of items, or eliminate, sorry, the exchanging of items so that we kind of keep ourselves safe. And because we are in the yellow tier, we are limited to a thirty-three percent capacity, so that depends on every school. Our Facilities Department figured out how many people that would be in an outside area, and we gave each school a map, so school sites are communicating all that information to their families. Next slide. And then, we have also distributed our DLI lawn signs to our sixth graders that have completed six years of DLI and have met the criteria of Spanish proficiency. So, there's some academic criteria, reading, writing, oral presentation. And then, also, there is a piece of community service that has normally been included in that, but it has been eliminated this year due to the stay-at-home orders. And next slide, I think I'm talking, bring it over to Dr. Grace.
Dr. Grace, you're muted.
Thank you. It's not a meeting if I don't mute, right? So, I'm happy tonight to share with you some amazing summer programs we have in place for our students. The, we have a summer camp from June fourteenth to July second, and then also summer camp for our students with disabilities from June fourteenth through July ninth. Next slide. So, our summer camp, it's an Acceleration Academy for students in TK through fifth grade. It will take place from June fourteenth through July second for three weeks. And we, the students will attend for four hours per day, five days a week. We're very excited that all twenty-three of our in-person sites will be offering this Acceleration Academy. So, about twenty percent of our students at every single school will be attending the Acceleration Academy. Our school principals reached out to our families that continued to work through distance learning, to offer them some spots in these classes so that their children could come back to in-person instruction. We also then looked at our engagement and attendance logs and tried to invite as many of our students who might not have participated in the full synchronous learning opportunity throughout the year. And then, principals opened it up widely at their school site. So, what are the students going to be doing during the summer camp? We have a curriculum that's going to help us accelerate our students' learning, cultivate their resilience, engage them back in school with their peers, and build confidence. We're also really excited that our, we have a group of our library and media assistants who are going to be opening up our libraries and will be checking out books on a small scale so that we are confident when we open in the fall that we can do that at all of our schools. We're going to have some of our music teachers providing music instruction during the summer with handheld instruments so our students can get back into the groove of playing together instruments. And we also will have some of our counselors to provide social-emotional learning and support. And many other of our classified paraeducators will be there supporting our students throughout the summer in learning. Next slide. Every year, we also offer extended school year for our students who have that as a goal and objective in their individual education plan. These will take place from June fourteenth through July ninth. It's four weeks, and they also will attend five days a week for four hours. These students will attend to six AESD sites. We will provide transportation as needed. And who will be attending are students that are in PK through fifth grade, where in their individual education plan, it asks for or requires us to provide an extended school year for them. They will also participate in music, library, and all of the other fun activities that we have planned at the school sites. Next slide. Very exciting for our sixth graders, as this has been a different year for them. They are going to be invited back to participate in a Quest Escape Camp. And it will be a one-week experience for the four hours, where teams of students will come together and they will be given a task that I believe the task is that they woke up and all the adults are gone. So, they have to work together to figure out how they will continue to exist with rules and norms and all of the difficult tasks, and it's focused on having our students collaborate together, establish their communication skills, and engage with each other for that week. Next slide. We're also excited, we're offering preschool summer camp at nine sites. Preschool will go June fourteenth through July second for the three weeks, and they'll be in session for three hours. Nine of our sites will be hosting preschool, and it's our current AESD preschool children. And the purpose of inviting them in is to get them the experience of being at school and help them transition to transitional kindergarten and/or kindergarten. Again, they'll be focused on social-emotional learning, language and literacy development, as well as physical education. Next slide. I think I'm turning it over to Mr. Ramirez.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Grace. I'd like to start off by reading some of our student quotes. First quotes from our first grader, M. Lopez, stating that "I like being with my friends. I can talk with them at break time. I like math." A fifth grader, A. Savala, states, "I am excited to be at school and learning more things. I get to participate more at school because there are more noises at home." So, it's very reassuring to hear the excitement and the confidence in these students as we reopen. At school, we continue to provide monthly coffee chats for our families. We communicate weekly through newsletters and other forms of communication. Parent support and cooperation, and cooperation has been incredible in regards to the following safety protocols and adhering to the health guidelines. It's really thrilling to see that all our students have not, have continued to wear their mask and socially distance and credit to our safety assistants and our campus supervisors for providing longer and consistent supervision and support and increasing that sense of security all day. In regards to technology, we continue, it's been an incredible year, and we continue to provide access and support to our families, and everyone has had a smile and is excited to participate in the new learning experiences that the reopening has provided us. Thank you very much, and this is our principal update.
Thank you, Principal Ramirez. So, next slide, please. And everyone, we just wanted to end this evening by celebrating the fact that for next school year, the Anaheim Elementary School District will return to full-day daily in-person instruction for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And as we said, updates are expected from the CDPH, or California Department of Public Health, as well as Cal OSHA, at approximately June fifteenth. So, to our stakeholders, we will continue to monitor the latest guidance and communicate information about the PPE and safety precautions that will be in place for next school year. And that concludes tonight's update. Thank you, and we welcome any questions that you might have for our team.
Thank you, Dr. Downing. Any questions or comments from Board Members? And if you'd like to comment also on item four A, Board Members, I don't want anyone to feel compelled, but you're more than welcome for either of those. Trustee Relus, go ahead.
Okay, so first, I have a couple of questions in regards to the summer school plans, in regards to the summer camps available. Clarifying question in the sense, you showed, Dr. Grace, that six school sites are going to be picked for the four-week summer camp, correct? You had mentioned that all twenty-three school sites will be operating at a twenty percent capacity, serving kindergarten through grade five. And then, you mentioned the other preschool summer camps at nine sites. My question is, does that twenty percent include those schools, or the students from those other programs as well? Or is that strictly just the general ed student population?
Good question. The twenty percent for the summer academy for TK through sixth, or TK through fifth grade is solely that group of students.
Okay.
I believe traditionally, in our extended school year, we offer, it's about two to three hundred kids. I'll put the exact number in the Friday update. With our preschool, it was amazing. We weren't sure how this would go, and we originally were going to have eight sites. When we put the survey out to our parents, within minutes, we were at full capacity. I see Maria is there. How many students are attending from preschool?
We have, good evening, we have about a hundred and thirty children attending from our preschool.
And then, each school site will have fifty sixth graders, so it's a good portion of our students that will be coming back in the summer, and next year, we hope to offer more opportunities for students to attend.
Great, great. My second question is to Dr. Downing, a clarifying question in regards to the Anaheim Elementary School District, a hundred percent people returning to in-person instruction. What happened to the online academy? Does that include them, or are they going to remain virtual?
Yes, we will still be offering the online academy, but we are reopening our twenty-three brick-and-mortar schools as well for full-day in-person instruction. And we look forward to providing some guidance to our Anaheim Elementary Online Academy. As the board may be aware, the state is really looking closely at providing updated guidance for virtual participation, including how enrollment will be taken, how daily attendance will be monitored. So, we continue to follow the legislation and will also provide guidance to our stakeholders about that. But yes, we began this virtual academy as support to take advantage of the technology that's out there and this new way of learning for students, and we look forward to continuing it for the future.
Thank you for bringing that up. You're referring to the sunset of SB ninety-eight, I believe? Now, with that said, our academy, though, is housed under the rule of independent studies, correct?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
That is correct. However, there will be additional guidance that needs to be provided to our parents. Also, one of the advantages that we have, again, that we know that this school has been successful throughout this distance learning, so our teachers continue to receive training that will allow them to improve engagement, if you will, for those families. It's my understanding that the state is looking at areas such as, you know, do we do wellness checks as part of this virtual academy? Do we mandate that social-emotional learning be part of the curriculum? So, those are the kinds of areas that are still being addressed, so we look forward to, again, opening our school and continuing its operation.
Awesome. And the final question is, in regards to the summer opportunities then, for individuals like that at the online academy, or any individuals that still feel uncomfortable about returning to in-person, will we be offering anything online for them?
At this time, we don't have a plan. The communication I've gotten from the school principal is most of the people who plan to return to a brick-and-mortar have been asking about it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Trustee Alvarez.
Yeah, just one question. You had mentioned that we're going to be offering the summer camp at the twenty-three sites, which is great. In my mind, I was thinking, well, we do have the students from the online academy. Are they able to attend any of the other sites' summer programs?
Yes, they could if the parents have requested that, yes. In addition, I forgot to mention that we are also offering summer academy for our dual-language students, which is awesome.
Yes, amazing. Thank you.
And if I could, just, I just want to thank all of the staff members that have volunteered to be a part of our summer academy. I know in different districts, they're having trouble staffing the summer programs, the much-needed summer programs, but our staff members have really stepped up, so we look forward to fully staff summer academies that focus on supporting our students. Thank you for allowing me to add that.
No, thank you, you know, Dr. Downing, and thank you, Dr. Grace, and your team and everybody that's involved in this process. Like, you are amazing when it comes to presenting the different summer options that we will have available. It's clear, there's a message. The principals have been articulating and talking with teachers here and there sporadically about interest and gauging that way. And I do think that a lot of our community is excited about it and whatnot, and I think that the manner in which we're approaching this is, it's excellent, and I feel strongly that as summer progresses, now, please, I want to take our time with summer, but I mean, as summer, you know, progresses and whatnot, and we enter the fall, I feel confident that we will continue to have these extended learning opportunities for our students here in AESD. So, kudos to you, Dr. Grace, and your team.
Just to say, thank you for all the effort that's been putting me this. I'm really excited about our summer programs. I was on a parent advisory committee meeting the other day, and for the, we talked about the preschool one, and everybody's just super excited about that. And, and it's just great. So, it's one, it's another way we're the amazing AESD. And it's going to be a great summer. And also, Principal Ramirez, thank you so much for all the communication. You've done such great communication throughout the year, keeping everybody apprised of all that's going on, great things at the school, and the communication. Communication has been great, so, and your newsletter, everything. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Board Members. Thank you, Dr. Downing, and all of your staff. It's no easy task trying to prepare for this when there's ever-changing and evolving guidelines coming out and cases and everything else, the logistics that go into this, so thank you for all of your hard work. Any other comments or questions, Board Members? Your Special Order of Business? Nope? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to item five, News and Updates. Five A is Parent Leadership Group Updates. There are no Parent Leadership Group Updates tonight. Item five B is Association Updates. There are no association updates this evening. Item five C is our District News and Updates, Communications and Public Information. There are no district news and updates. Item six is our Public Speakers. These are speakers on agenda or non-agenda items. There is one public comment that has been submitted, which will be read by Dr. Christopher Downing.
Thank you. We have one public comment that was submitted this evening by Brandy Augustine. Dear AESD Board Members and AESD Cabinet, During the global pandemic, youth obesity rates have soared in the absence of recess, PE, and youth sports. As AESD continues to move towards the new normal to resume these vital physical health activities, we ask the district to review the currently enforced parking policy at Roosevelt and Juarez. Both of these properties are good neighbors to our city parks that are often used by our local youth sports organizations. Currently, both schools are not allowing for the civic use of the parking facilities after school hours based on chains blocking lots and security guard enforcement. Youth sports are now, more than ever, a crucial component to youth mental and physical health as we recover as a community. Youth baseball, soccer, and tennis all use the adjoining parks for the benefit of AESD and AUHSD students participating in these community programs. I would like to respectfully request the district consider allowing the community to use the parking facilities after school hours until at least ten PM to allow youth and high school sports- until at least 10:00 PM to allow youth and high school sports to conclude. Doing so will allow our youth to continue to be physically active and develop the social and emotional skills necessary to be successful contributing members of our Anaheim community. Such an action will also reduce the risk associated with children crossing busy streets to participate in healthy physical activity. Thank you for your time and consideration for this matter.
Okay, thank you very much. That takes us to item seven, superintendent's report and public hearings. Item A, it is recommended the Board of Education declare a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comments on the Lincoln easement dedication. Written comments, up to 500 words, may be submitted online via a form and must be received by 12:00 PM on Wednesday, May 26, 2021. Comments submitted will be read aloud by the board president or designee. After hearing no comments from the public, we can now adjourn the hearing and vote on the following item. Item seven B, it is recommended the Board of Education adopt Resolution 2020-21/56, authorizing conveyance of two easements to the city of Anaheim to facilitate the widening of Lincoln Avenue. The easements are being conveyed to the city in exchange for $17,100 to undertake conveyance of an easement, education code sections 17556. Its sequence anticipates a public process identifying the property in an advertisement of the dedication followed by a hearing held at a subsequent board meeting. This process ensures that the public is made aware of the encumbrance, dedication, or sale of the property. The statutory process having been completed, the district would be conveying the easements. Is there a motion?
So moved. Relus.
There's a motion. Thank you, Trustee Relus.
Second, Philbeck.
Second by Trustee Philbeck. Any discussion on this item?
Just a clarification. Mr. Chavaria, I believe you talked to the city, just so our public knows. This easement is for a certain part of Lincoln Avenue. I know there had been a lot of discussion in Anaheim about the widening of Lincoln, but this is not taking place. This is taking place at this location. And in other words, it's not being widened down by Anaheim High School and in that area, correct?
That is correct.
For a certain, one certain part more east of that.
Yes, this is for this section right in front of Lincoln. And it's actually going to support our parents because they'll be adding a left turn lane in there as well as a crossing for some of our students to cross across with the light there as well. So it would support them because right now, you know, they have to walk quite a bit by the pancake house in order to cross. That would be just in front. And it would also improve the flow of our traffic there as well as parents coming in because it would provide it will extend the exit to go right and left. Right now, you can only go right. If you attend Lincoln, you know that you only can exit right. But this will allow, because the signal will be put there as well, to be able to go left or right, easing the flow of traffic for us as well.
Well, thank you for the clarification because I know when some people saw this, they misunderstood that, you know, because there had been a big discussion about this before. And so thank you for clarifying how this actually benefits us in that area. But that, the, I believe it was, it's not going to be widened, at least as far as we know from the city, down in the one area of Visser's and Anaheim High School and that area. There's no plans to widen that at this time. This is just in front of the Lincoln.
That's correct.
I just wanted to clarify that because some people were confused about that and said, you know, told me, no, 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 the widening didn't go through. Well, it did on this eastern part. It did. And we've clarified that, obviously, with the city.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Essentially, maybe Jesse knows this, we're going to get rid of the cement walkway in front of where the bus stop is, and then maybe push the bus stop back to where there's like an empty planter. Is that kind of how it's going to work out? I'm trying to visualize it.
Yeah, there's two small sections. One will expand. You know, right now, you come in and you exit out, so it's expanding that, taking a piece to make it bigger so that cars can actually exit left and exit right. And then the other piece closer to where the bus stop is, taking a little section so that they can widen the street so that it can be an additional lane that could go through that part of the Lincoln, Lincoln Street.
Got it. That makes sense. Yeah, that's kind of how I thought it would work out based on the layout. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavaria. Any other questions, board members? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Trustee Relus.
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez.
Aye.
Board Clerk Philbeck.
Aye.
Also vote aye, passes four zero, excuse me. Item C, may revise budget update for 2021 to 22. Jesse Chavaria, Assistant Superintendent, Administrative Services.
It's your turn. Everyone got to mute tonight.
Well, good evening, Board President Lopez, members of the board. On Friday, May 14th, Governor Newsom presented his May revision to the 2122 state budget. And this evening, I will provide to the board a summary of his budget proposal and what it would mean for our district. Next slide, please. So the governor has a vision for California for all kids. He proposes achieving this vision by 2526. And he provides a roadmap that includes universal access to TK, year-round access to enrichment activities, well-prepared and well-supported teachers, deeper connections and relationships between students and adults, access to school-wide nutrition programs, wraparound services to children and their families, and student access to broadband and computer technology. Next slide, please. So the governor believes he can accomplish this, given the surplus that, 100 billion surplus that the state is facing currently. This 100 billion surplus comprised of 76 billion in extra state revenues as well as 25 billion from federal resources. The 54 billion deficit that we were talking about about a year ago, that's a distant memory. But not everything is good in California. The unemployment rate was 8.3% in March. And the governor is using 12 billion for the Golden State stimulus. Next slide, please. So the governor is proposing the following cost of living adjustments. He's calling the 5.07% to the LCFF formula a mega cola. He's also proposing 4.05% a compounded cola for special education and a 1.7 statutory cola for other category programs such as our mandated block grant. Next slide, please. The governor is also proposing what he calls new concentration grant monies. This is 1.1 billion in ongoing funding. This would increase the concentration grant funding factor from 50% to 65%. He wants these monies to be used by districts to increase the number of adults serving students and develop deeper connections. And he would require districts to include it in the LCAP in terms of how those funds would be utilized. Next slide, please. This table here shows you the LCFF funding factors. So in 2021, our base grant for primary grades, what, $7,702? And for upper grades, $7,818. Adding the mega cola of 5.07% would mean $390 more for primary and $396 more for upper grade. That would be a new base grant per DA for 2122 of $8,092 in primary, $8,214 in upper grade. There's also a grade span adjustment for primary of $842, leaving an adjusted base grant per DA for 2122 of $8,934 for primary and $8,214 for upper grade. We have an unduplicated count in our district of 90%. So 90% of our students would receive an additional 20% in terms of supplemental grant. For primary, that would be $1,787, and for upper grade, $1,643. And then the concentration part is any unduplicated count over 55%. We do have 35% of our students who would qualify for that. So in primary is $4,467 additional dollars and in upper grade, $4,107. Next slide, please. The governor also proposes $2 billion for a new grant to supplement the in-person instruction grant. The purpose of these monies would be to support health and safety and providing in-person instruction. He does say that these funds could be used from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2023. And below you see some of the actual uses of this grant. Next slide, please. The governor is also proposing $2.6 billion in one-time monies to support targeted and research-tested academic interventions such as high-dose tutoring, intensive re-engagement for students and families, accelerating learning and addressing barriers to learning, supports for designated students, and increased instructional time. Because he's using Proposition 98 funds as well as federal monies, the deadlines for use of these funds would range from September 30th, 2022 to June 30th, 2024. Next slide, please. He's also proposing summer and after-school programs. He's proposing $1 billion in 2122, growing to $5 billion in 2526. At full implementation, these funds would be incorporated into the LCFF concentration grant. And what he's asking in terms of these monies is for school districts to provide expanded learning opportunities for students to create a nine-hour school day as well as provide 30 days of summer school with at least nine hours of expanded learning. And of course, looking to lower class sizes and, like it stated, their support before and after-school programs. Next slide, please. He's also proposing universal transitional kindergarten. He's proposing $900 million in 2223, increasing to $2.7 billion by 2425. And he's also including an investment of $380 million in 2223 and $740 million in 2425 to cut classroom ratios in TK. And so his vision is to start in 2223 by including students who are born between September 2nd and March 2nd, moving in 2324 to include students born September 2nd through June 2nd. And by 2425, students born from September 2nd through September 1st. Next slide, please. The governor is also proposing $3.3 billion for educator preparation, retention, and training to support teachers working in high-priority schools and high-need subject areas, support classified staffs pursuing teaching credentials, waive credential fees, and provide high-quality professional learning for administrators and other school leaders. Next slide, please. He also talked about distance learning, and he said that the in-person instruction for 2122 school year would be the default for all students and schools. He did mention that families, that there are families that remain hesitant to come back to in-person. And so he says that districts can continue serving those families but using the independent study statutes. So basically, he's saying there's two ways to earn a state apportionment funding in 2122. That would be through in-person instruction or independent study statutes. It was mentioned that districts can feel comfortable moving forward with planning for a non-classroom-based option such as virtual academies that we have, the one that we have, using the legal framework from independent study. Next slide, please. So all those things that were previously mentioned are all the good things. The next couple of slides are some things that we have to be, you know, cautiously optimistic. The cash flow and deferral situation. He did eliminate deferrals that were scheduled for February through May of 2022, but it does not impact the current deferrals. We did have deferrals starting in February, continuing on through June, and we'll be getting those funds July through November of 2021. There are 2.6 billion still left in deferrals, and he addresses this through doing a deferral on June 2022 and paying us in July of 2022. Next slide, please. The other part that's a caution to us is the cap on district reserves because the governor is proposing contributing 4.6 billion to the Proposition 98 reserve. This would trigger the law that caps local school district reserves for the 2223 fiscal year, meaning that we could not have a reserve that is higher than 10%. This presents a challenge for us because we do have ESSER and ESSER III funds, large amounts of those funds that, you know, that have a deadline to be spent up to 2024, meaning that that would create a challenge in us meeting that 10% reserve cap. Next slide, please. Also, the other considerations, the governor did not talk about the whole harmless clause that ends next school year. And if that were to take place based on our current enrollment, it could be a possibility of a loss of 1,000 ADA, meaning about $14 million in revenue. The governor also did not talk about STIRS and PERS rates. The state is picking up those increases this year as well as next year, but there was no talk about 2223. That usually costs us about three and a half to $4 million. And of course, step-in column costs for us, declining enrollment, special education contribution. And the hot topic right now is the threat of inflation. You know, among all the economists that it could impact our economy, you know, as we move forward. The, I do want to conclude before I turn it over to questions. As you know, the next step in this process is the state legislation gets to kind of pick at the governor's budget proposal. There are two things that capital advisors at a workshop did mention in the workshop yesterday. One was the concentration piece that I mentioned about increasing it from 50% to 65%. I am told that the state legislators slashed that because they believe that it's more equitable to provide that through the supplemental piece, whereas 20%. Because that would mean that any district, even if they have one student who qualifies, would get part of that. So they're proposing there, increasing that 20% to about 23 or 24% per ADA. And the other piece that they also kind of slashed, they said the districts have a lot of money already in terms of in-person instruction, is the $2 billion that the governor is proposing for health and safety as well. And now, next slide, please. I will open up to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chavaria. Board members, any questions? Trustee Relus? Comments, questions? Okay. Trustee Alvarez.
Yes, thank you. You're talking about, we might have some issues with having too much money in reserves. Have we thought about some creative ways that we could potentially funnel those funds to with regards to how it can assist our students academically? Some ideas like special projects or like lowering class size even more? Is that even possible to do? Or what are the restrictions on using funds that we would need to kind of use so that we're not running the risk of having too much reserves?
So later in the present, in the board meeting, we'll talk about the expanded learning grant and its plan. And although the plan only has 13.3 million to account for, the actual plan, the ideas that were provided through the stakeholder input are much more than that. So that's probably going to cost us a lot more than that amount. So that's where some of those ESSER funds could be used. I know also for next year, you know, we're putting in 34 supplemental teachers to lower class sizes. And so that is a plan that moving forward, we have kind of accounted to provide that as well. So that's where the challenge is, that if we commit monies to pay for teachers and so on, even though you haven't spent it, it's there, right? And in terms, that's the challenge piece. That doesn't mean that the 10% that we have is just for us to have. It could be already committed, but it does show as a reserve because we haven't spent it yet.
Thank you.
Board Clerk Philbeck.
Yes, that was an excellent report. Thank you. And as I said before, I've been involved in about five of them in the past week or so because everybody's having kind of a review on this, on this budget. So when I attended the CSBA conference a weekend or so ago, and that was over Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, there was a huge emphasis on the need to focus on social and emotional wellbeing of our students, family, and staff, and putting measures in place or programs in place to address what might be some lingering trauma. And so can you kind of just tell me, in all of this, what umbrella that might be under? Or, you know, what part does any, does any of this address that? Or, you know, what part does any, does any of this address that?
So a lot of the, the funds that are being proposed by the governor would be able to, we would be able to use for that. But the good thing is that the ESSR II and the ESSR III do address that. And actually, the ESSR III, we have to set aside twenty percent to support students, right? And so for us, uh, when you look at twenty percent of forty-three million dollars, you're, you know, you're looking at quite a bit of money that can be used for those specific things. I know that uh part of the plan that we'll present it later does talk about that. And that is something that it, the services team, along with our superintendents, working to see how we can provide those services to our students.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavaria. I just have a question regarding slide seven and eight. You had mentioned uh that there's a certain level or a certain timeline, deadline by which we need to expend these funds. To clarify, that means they actually must be used by that time, not merely allocated or program, correct?
That's correct. So like the, for example, the ESSR funds, the ESSR III that we received, they need to be committed by September of twenty twenty-three, but they can be spent up to September of twenty twenty-four. So the requirement for some funds is that you commit them a year before. Others, you have until that specific timeline to spend them. So the expanded learning grant that we'll talk about later has to be spent by August thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. Right? So you couldn't spend something and come uh September of twenty twenty-two, it needs to be spent by August thirty-first.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Chavaria. That takes us to item D, CREST final recommendations. Maria Vegas, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and Laura Houston, teacher on special assignment.
Good evening, school board members, Board President Lopez, Superintendent Downing, community members, cabinet members. It's my pleasure to be joining you this evening with my co-presenter Laura Houston, our teacher on special assignment for History, Social Studies, and the Arts. So this evening, we'd like to share with you a summary of the work that our culturally responsive and ethnic studies task force completed over the last six months and share with you their professional learning recommendations as it relates to the implementation of culturally and linguistically responsive teaching and learning, as well as the role of our rollout of our new History, Social Studies curriculum. Laura and I would like to just take a minute to thank you and the board, Dr. Downing and Dr. Grace, for giving us the opportunity to engage and lead this work as we're both very passionate about this work and believe that it's going to have such a great impact for our students and communities. So, next slide. So here you just have um some overall summary of the task force. We, um, it's a, it was a diverse committee of stakeholders that we wanted to engage in this work, about twenty-nine members. It included district personnel, community partners, PTA parents, site administrators, district administrators, and also our um high school partners as well. Uh, the objectives of our CREST committee was to first and foremost engage in professional learning together as a group to have a shared experience, to really try to understand um these concepts deeply, so we're able to then better inform and make some recommendations in terms of a professional learning plan. And then the final task, that second bullet there, was to also have our task force give us recommendations on a professional learning plan that, again, would help support the rollout of a History, Social Studies plan, but also other curriculum that addresses equity, inclusivity, and multiple perspectives of all learners, while promoting um our goals of, of having a true diverse school community represented. So our why, of course, um, there starts with our students and continues to be that focus on our student, on our students. We want to uh ensure that we're doing this to help shape our students, to find their identity in their community, to encourage their strength and their confidence and knowing their place in our community, that we see them, we support them, and we want our curriculum to reflect them and their, and to also support them in their future endeavors, you know, be, beyond our elementary and into high school and beyond. Next slide, please. This slide here captures um the major topics uh with the end goal in mind there in the middle. So just a quick little overview, I know that we were able to connect with you guys when we first, before we started our, our CREST meetings. These are the overarching topics that were covered during the meetings. That first top left circle, we focused on culturally and linguistically responsive teaching and implicit bias. We spent time on the History, Social Science Framework, the Fair Education Act, also known as Senate Bill forty-eight. We studied the Ethnic Studies Model Curriculum Guidelines, as well as the social justice standards from um the Learning for Justice website. And we looked at, and we also looked at our language arts curriculum um benchmark and the social justice units that are already provided and the inquiry questions offered in the curriculum. And finally, the group at this last meeting at the beginning of May gave us our recommendations for some professional, for our professional learning plan, which we're going to cover in the next couple of slides. Next slide, please. So here you have this grid, and um it just, it's an overall grid that kind of captures some of the major topics that we explore during our CREST meetings. At a later time, when, when you're able to peruse the presentation personally, we've linked all the presentations or highlighted hyperlinked in blue there for you. Um, and the, the yellow stars there, they highlight some of the topics that many of our CREST members felt were especially important and crucial to include, to include as we move forward to planning professional development. So you see implicit bias was a topic that we spent a lot of time on and that there was a lot of discussion around. That critically conscious educator was also um highlighted by our team, by our task force um as being critical to the plan, the social justice standards, and then also talking about asset-based pedagogy and the culturally linguistic responsive teaching. Next slide, please. And then on this slide, um, again, going based on the recommendations, we thought this visual kind of captured it. The, the task force recommended that the professional development would include both the ideology behind developing as a culturally responsive and con, um, as a, developing as a critically conscious and culturally proficient educator, along with the actual practice of using the tools for instruction, such as the History, Social Studies Framework, the standards, the curriculum, et cetera. And most importantly, that we spend the time on building the why before the what and the how that you have there on the right. I know oftentimes we want to jump into the doing and, you know, we're, we're educators, we have plans, we have checklists, we want to just, you know, start, start engaging the kids in the doing. But again, these topics are quite rich and quite complex that it, um, it's imperative that we spend the time on the people and the topics and the, the concepts behind um culturally responsive pedagogy. And um that was something that came clear from our task force. And um as I shared that, I, I know that Laura and I shared a quote with you early on when, again, when we presented in January. And it used to be in the hallways, again, in Building A somewhere, I was looking for it. And it was just a quote that said, the people can't be anything, that organization can't be what the people are. So again, I, I, heading closely now as we're getting ready to engage our, our teachers and our, our staff classified, classified and certified, how important that is that we include that and spend the time on the drivers, the beliefs, the perceptions that will drive this work. Next slide. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Laura, and she's going to go a little more into depth into the specifics of the PD.
Thank you, Maria. Hi, everyone. Um, it was really difficult for us to narrow down everything that we discussed and learned in our CREST meetings, but we did. And this slide shows the top five general topics that our committee felt that our staff should learn more deeply about. And the strongest recommendation by far was training on implicit bias, which involves self-awareness and the need for constant self-reflection. And if you could click, please, on the mouse. I just have an arrow that's going to fly in here. There, thank you. So uh, we think it may be necessary to partner with experts in the field to provide our leaders with the courage and knowledge to lead this important work. And um our group also felt that the Fair Education Act uh would be very important. This was, even though the Fair Act has been around for a while, this was new learning for a lot of our uh task force members. And teachers will see the Fair Act reflected in our new History, Social Science curriculum. And then moving on over to the social justice standards. So I introduced the team to the social justice standards that were created by the Learning for Justice team, which you may know them uh formally as um Teaching Tolerance, the Teaching Tolerance website. They have recently changed their name to Learning for Justice. So the, the neat thing is that Benchmark has added social justice questions to their pre-existing curriculum. And I am working on also weaving the social justice questions into um the Savis Learning Company History, Social Science curriculum. And there is a link there to a draft document that I'm working on, a crosswalk document. And um, you know, the main thing I feel is that teachers can reframe lessons toward the lens of social justice and multiple, multiple perspectives um through the use of questioning. And um you'll also see the topic of asset-based pedagogy was a recommendation also from the group, um, along with the idea of, of what is a critically conscious educator. And as you can see, all of these topics work in concert with one another. Um, in the beginning, I imagine laying the groundwork for these topics, but because of the nature of learning, further understanding of these topics does not come um immediately, just like a shift in perspective doesn't happen overnight. And for example, understanding the definition of what implicit bias is does not immediately enlighten us to be able to recognize our own bias. So uh, future trainings will revisit these fundamental ideas and add even more context. And context allows for individual growth. And all of this is a very uh personal process, this growth, but it is fundamental if we are to become culturally responsive. Next slide, please.
Oh, Laura, Laura, can we go back to that slide? Just uh that crosswalk document, Anna, can you click on it? It's just such amazing work. I think I was spending a couple of minutes just to share that with our, with our board.
Okay, so um what this is, I'm calling it an awareness document as well. So the first column on the left um are the Benchmark Social Justice Resources that have been created by our Benchmark English Language Arts Series. And what they did, um, they didn't, they didn't add any new readings. They applied inquiry-based questions through the lens of social justice to the pre-existing curriculum. So this is wonderful because the teachers are already familiar with Benchmark, and this is just adding an extra layer. And so then um I'm connecting, uh, matching uh chapters through History, Social Science. So, you know, we usually use English Language Arts to drive instruction. But so here, you know, we can add on um History, Social Science. You can see Unit One, Government and Citizenship, and Benchmark uh matches with um Chapter One Government and Citizenship with Savis Learning. And then I tied in the Ethnic Studies General Principles, and then um the Social Justice Outcomes in the next, in the fourth column over. And the Social Justice Outcomes come from the um, the Teaching Tolerance Anti-Bias Framework. And then finally, um, I linked in the History, Social Science Standards, which connect with everything. And I do see those standards changing very soon since they're from nineteen ninety-eight. But um, it, this is, this is a big document, and it, it goes down. So um, Anna, if you wouldn't mind just scrolling down. So there's Unit One, Unit Four, and I believe in Benchmark, it's Unit Six, um, Seven, and Nine. And I'm just uh working on that throughout um all the grade levels. And you can see the, the social justice questions. I put some examples of them there on the left. This is kindergarten. And um I've only completed kindergarten and first grade. Um, but I do have um some sixth grade questions so that if you want to look at it on your own, you can kind of see the vertical, you know, growth. I do believe the questions are, are age-appropriate and maturity level-appropriate. But this is still a work in progress, and I'm open to suggestions because it's a big undertaking. Do we want to go back to the main presentation?
So sorry, yes.
Okay, so um, next slide, please. So this is what we have planned for the upcoming professional learning around the new History, Social Science curriculum. Um, Columns Two and Four contain the, some of the CREST recommendations. So, you know, our team recommended really instructing everyone about the Fair Education Act and um introduce the, the Benchmark Social Justice Units. And I thought that those would go nicely um in the History, Social Science uh Framework training that I'll be doing. That's Column Two. And then Column Four, I have a draft title there. Uh, I want to call that training culturally and linguistically responsive teaching and beyond. And um it just covers a lot of what we talked about, you know, on the previous slides. Yeah, column, yes, Column Four would revolve heavily around culturally and linguistically responsive teaching. And as you can see, the dates at the bottom of each column. So the History, Social Science Framework and Beyond and the Savis Learning Company trainings would start in summer and continue through fall. And then I also want to create a training revolved around uh flipping the classroom using, using History, Social Science because I think it's going to be a natural transition since we're coming off of distance learning. And then Column Four would be, uh, would start in trimester one and be ongoing from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four. Next slide, please. So just a thought, if we refer to students as scholars, why not refer to educators as luminaries? Why not honor them with this title from time to time? A luminary is a person who inspires or influences others, and that is exactly what we as educators are charged with doing on a daily basis. And I think being called luminaries reminds us of the significance of our position and that, and that how we as educators, how we speak and how we behave affects our students. Next slide, please. And so I've included three slides that contain quotes and thoughts from some of our CREST member luminaries. This is Lubna, and she was one of our preschool teachers and part of the CREST team. And her quote there on the left says, "To empower students in the face of social injustices and bullying, we need critically conscious educators who can question, recognize, and overcome implicit biases through self-reflection and professional development." And then I also included some of her other thoughts that she uh wrote. I asked everybody on the CREST team to submit a document to me. Even though we met and broke off into teams and chose what we, we thought would be most important for a professional development, I also asked them to submit a personal reflection. And so I took these quotes and thoughts from the personal reflections that they emailed to me. So you can see there are some of her other thoughts that I will let you read on your own time. So next slide, please. This is a, um, Lori is another CREST luminary, and she teaches third grade at Edison. And Lori said, "Through my participation, through my participation in CREST, I was able to look at myself and better understand my background bias and how this affects my teaching." And Lori also went on to talk about the need for teachers to be able to have deep, necessary conversations around culturally responsive teaching. Next slide, please. And then this is from Alma, and Alma is another CREST luminary who teaches first-grade Spanish DLI at Price. And she said, "At the end of every meeting, I felt hopeful that we were moving in the right direction. As educators, we have a very important responsibility to speak for those who are not heard, our students, our parents, and the community."
Okay, and Maria, uh, please continue.
Sure. Very good. Yeah, I, that wonderful quote, I think it's just beautiful from one of our, one of our DLI teachers. Are, Laura, are you okay? It's still, I think, um, again, just to reiterate, I, the idea of making sure we have, I'm just going to reread the quote because I just think it's
Did I free? Hello?
Hi, Laura, you're breaking up a little bit. Or I'm not sure if your connection is back.
Sorry, I turned off, I turned off my camera in case that was taken away from some of my broadband. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Okay, should I? Okay, so if, I'm sorry about that. If I could go to the next slide, please. Thank you for your patience, internet. So the butterfly slide. So we ended every CREST meeting with this slide. And what you see here on this butterfly are the essential elements of a culturally proficient individual. And I placed the phrase values diversity at the very center because that element is required for any of the other four to be effective in the classroom. And we have to start with that one core value. And valuing diversity means loving all people, acknowledging all points of view, and making a constant effort to create a classroom environment that teaches all students to become effective and participating members of a democracy. And thank you, that's all I have. And we do have future meeting dates set to continue the conversation.
All right, thank you, Ms. Vegas and Ms. Houston. Board members, any comments or questions? Trustee Relis?
I just had a clarifying question for Maria. When you were going through and whatnot, I saw that there was a term utilized throughout of Benchmark. Like, what exactly are, how are we using this reference throughout the presentation, like Benchmark?
Benchmark is the name of our English Language Arts and Spanish Language Arts Curriculum, the Benchmark Curriculum. So sorry if we didn't make that.
Okay, I didn't know if we're talking about type of benchmarks you did because I immediately turned me off because I was like, how are you going to assess, you know, this type of intense stuff? And you have like multiple different benchmarks? And so I was like, I don't know.
Yeah, great, great question. They're not metrics or measures of anything, no, thank you. That's the name of our adopted curriculum, thank you.
Awesome, I would definitely clarify that in the beginning next time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Trustee Alvarez.
I just want to thank you for all your work on this. I really appreciate the fact that you included not just culturally but linguistically responsive learning. That's super important. And the idea of how a teacher can be a source of value for a student's primary language if their primary language is not, for example, English. And then talking about how we can now, we can incorporate valuing each child's background within the scope of lessons is really important. And I love, I love the focus on, let's, let's work on the people first, right? Let's see where they're at, let's touch base with each other, let's respect on each other before jumping into the work. Because I think that's an important start. So you, you nailed it. This is a really great outcome from these meetings. I really do appreciate your heart and your, and your enthusiasm about doing this work and making it work. And then that crosswalk is perfect, the perfect resource, right? Because now a teacher can look, hey, it's not like I have to add anything new to my lessons. I'm looking at what the lessons are already and then how do I then make them more culturally or linguistically responsive? That's awesome because the last thing a teacher needs is a new program, a new thing to do, a new lesson to add to their plate. We're just looking at our lessons and reflecting, which is great practice. And I really do appreciate that. So I appreciate everything you've done and look forward to the results of this committee. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Trustee Alvarez, for Clerk Philbeck.
Just to say what they said, and thank you very much for a great presentation with such important content. And I really did like the quotes at the end, too. Those are very, very inspiring, thank you.
Yes, thank you again, just to, just to echo, reiterate my board colleagues. Very comprehensive presentation, a lot of information to take in. So I'll, I'll definitely be rereading through that Google Sheet in the next few days, thank you. Item Five, or sorry, Item Seven E, Expanded Learning Opportunities Plan. We have Dr. Mary Grace, Assistant Superintendent Educational Services, and Jesse Chavaria is back, Assistant Superintendent of Administrative Services, to present what he had foreshadowed a couple items ago.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Lopez, Board President Lopez, sorry about that. Mr. Chavaria and I are here to explain not only the budget, but also the great opportunities that we will be able to provide to our students, families, and staff through the Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant. Next slide. So there, with money, there's always requirements. Next slide. Within the requirements, there are seven strategies that we needed to consider and plan for. On here, there are six listed because the seventh criteria has to do with credit recovery at the junior high, high school level, so it didn't apply to us. So we have to look at extended learning time. And that could be summer school, intercession, those types of programs. Accelerate progress, so not focusing in on what we perceive they didn't learn, but how can we take them from what they did learn and the learning modality they had for 13 months and grow from there? Integrated Student Support, which includes the mental health, social, emotional learning component. Community Learning Hubs. And the intent of that strategy is to keep the school doors open to our families after school. And this is a really good opportunity because we know we have families that need 45 minutes, an hour, hour and a half. And the Anaheim Achieves, the Safe School Grant we already have in place, doesn't particularly provide that. So we're looking forward to having some after-school options. Additional academic services, so making sure that whatever we're doing, we're making sure we've, we have a screener in place so that we know where kids are and what they need and provide the next steps. And then finally, some training for our staff in trauma-informed practices, engaging families in addressing social, emotional learning as well as health and academic concerns. Next slide. So as soon as we learned about this opportunity grant, we set up some engagement level meetings. We had district-level engagement. We met with our PTA, our Parent Leadership Institute, our Curriculum Assessment and Instruction Leadership Committee, along with AEEA, our LCAP Committee, our DACD-LAC. And then we're here today to put the, show you the plan that we put together based on the stakeholder input for your approval. Next slide. In addition, each school site has submitted input that they received from their stakeholders. So their leadership team, whether it was through formal meetings and surveys with their staff, as well as meeting with their school site council and any other parent groups to get input about what they envisioned taking place at the school sites within those seven strategies. Next slide. We also did engage with our employee groups. We engaged with AEEA on both May 19th, then again on May 25th, and CSEA on May 25th. Next slide. So these are just some of the trends we were seeing from the staff input when we put the presentation together. For the Expanded Learning Extended School Year, absolutely summer camp opportunities. As well as, you may recall, we still have a three-week Christmas break. So that's an ideal time to provide some very targeted support to children once we know how they're moving along within the curriculum. Perhaps offering Saturday school opportunities and before and after-school opportunities. There on several input slides from the schools, I noticed that the parents are looking for add-on to the school day. Not necessarily like coming on a Saturday or a different day of the week, but they did want all of it, which we will provide to give options to our families. For the Integrated Learning Supports and Social/Emotional Support, organizing games and providing structured, yet not too structured, socialization opportunities for students during the school day, after school over the summer, mentoring opportunities. Perhaps we have some before-school social/emotional learning to set the day on a positive note. Social/Emotional Learning connecting, better relationships on campus, enrichment opportunities such as coding, leadership, running club, and others. Respite support for parents as needed, and then lower class sizes. Next slide. Continuing on with the staff input for learning supports and intervention, continue and/or increase after-school intervention groups. Adding additional teacher-on-special assignment support to support our emergent bilinguals, our English, the English language mainstream students, as well as our dual-language students. And then support for our English learners. Some additional academics, safety and pupil supports, professional development to review English learner strategies, access to content strategies, and social/emotional learning strategies. Provide classified staff with some professional learning to support social/emotional learning, PBIS, CPI, which is Crisis Prevention Institute, and other strategies that will help support our students in problem-solving. Additional instructional assistance to support small group instruction and additional homework help. Next slide. So some of the trends, and you'll see there were commonalities. This is from our parents for Expanded Learning Summer Camp. They request to continue the Quest Camp beyond this summer. Offering opportunities in winter and summer. Tutoring for all students who are interested. Peer tutors and/or big buddies, little buddies. And family nights, offering various subjects for families to come and engage with each other. Some integrated learning supports and social/emotional learning. Reading clubs, writing clubs, various types of academic types clubs, homework club with teacher support. Increase social/emotional services, after-school art classes. Next slide. So for learning supports, parents were interested in having after-school intervention groups in-person. Support for language learners, both English and Spanish support, lower class sizes. Additional academic services, safety pupil supports. One of the requests was conversational Spanish to support our dual-language Spanish learners. Technology for all students. The next slide. So now Mr. Chavaria is going to cover the fiscal requirements as well as the grant itself.
Next slide, please. So part of the grant, like it was mentioned earlier, the Expanded Learning Grant, the allocation is $13.3 million. And the grant calls for in-person services at a minimum to spend 85% of the apportionment. And it does call for 10% to be spent on paraprofessionals. Next slide. So based on the Expanded Learning Plan and its requirements in the six areas that were identified, we're allocating those amounts to each of those specific areas. Now you saw the amount of services or ideas or, or, you know, or programs that were requested or provided in that input. And so as we look at that plan to implement all of those different things, we know that that plan is going to exceed that $13.3 million. So that's where we can use some of the other funds to support that. The specifics of every single thing of those plans will be worked out by our services and as well as our superintendent. But we wanted to make sure, because the plan calls for allocating the $13.3 million into those various sources there. So as you can see, we put in extended learning time, 5.2 million. The, the summer camp that we're offering this summer, based on the personnel that have been hired and the materials that needed to be purchased, is costing us about $2.2 million. So these funds have until August 31st of next year to be spent. We're allocating two summer camps pretty much in terms of that. So it's about, you know, that amount, about $4.6 million in terms of that cost. But then like it was mentioned, a winter camp as well. So we're kind of planning for that. And accelerated progress, we're allocating $1.2 million. Integrated Student Supports, $2 million. Community Learning Hubs, $1 million. Additional Academic Services, $2 million. And Training for Staff, $2 million. Like I have previously mentioned, as your funds, 20% of those funds have to be allocated for, for student supports as well, and in particular, accelerating learning. And so those are funds that can be utilized as part of this plan as well. Next slide. And I will open it up to any questions or comments the board may have.
All right, thank you, Dr. Grace and Mr. Chavaria. Any questions or comments? Trustee Relis?
No, just a comment in the sense that that's a lot of money that we have to kind of spend during this time, but like lots of different opportunities it can provide our students and the families that we serve. And I've already given kudos in the sense of how well-planned everything is. And I just feel strongly that we continue to press forward and continue to publicize to our community about why these are essential and why they're significant. I think that this is all awesome.
Thank you, Trustee Relis, Trustee Alvarez.
Yes, I just wanted to make the comment of being appreciative of including employees and community in giving some input on where we can use these funds and how they feel like they need to be supported. So that's always a good thing, so thank you for doing that.
Board Clerk Philbeck.
Just thank you for the presentation. It's a lot of work that you have ahead of you, doing all this and figuring it all out. And I just want to say thank you for doing it.
I agree, a lot of work in a very brief period of time. So thank you for getting in front of this and anticipating all these different programs and ways that we can use these funds to benefit our schools and our students and our families. So that takes us to Item F. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the Expanded Learning Opportunities Plan as presented at the May 26, 2021 Board Meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved, Relis.
Second, Alvarez.
There's a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Trustee Relis?
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez?
Aye.
Board Clerk Philbeck?
Aye.
So vote aye, that passes 4-0. And as a reminder, all of these presentations will be posted on the district website, Board of Education page. Takes us to Item Eight, Consent Calendar. Consent Calendar, items listed under the Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and are acted on by the Board in one motion. There is no discussion of these items unless a member of the Board, staff, or the public requests specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the Consent Calendar. Are there any items to be pulled at this time? Trustee Relis? Trustee Alvarez? Board Clerk Philbeck?
Yes, I must pull, it's on page eight, Item E4, under Administrative Services. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Board Clerk Philbeck, it is recommended the Board of Education approve, ratify the following Consent Calendar items with the exception of Item 8A.3, which was removed at the request of administration prior to the adoption of the agenda, and Item 8E.4, which was pulled and will be voted on separately. Is there a motion for the balance?
So moved, Relis.
Second, Philbeck.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Trustee Relis?
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez?
Aye.
Board Clerk Philbeck?
Aye.
All right, thank you. That takes us to Item 8E.4. It is recommended the Board of Education ratify an agreement between this district and Anaheim Family YMCA, 240 South Euclid Street, Anaheim, California, 92802, to provide transportation services on an as-needed and when-available basis between May 26, 2021, and June 30, 2022. Reimbursement to the district for transportation services shall be rated at $90 per hour for seven hours and $135 per hour after seven hours and on non, on a non-workday with a two-hour minimum per bus, portal-to-portal, with no mileage or other additional charges. Is there a motion?
So moved, Relis.
I'll go ahead and second this. Any discussion?
Dr. Downing, were you trying, were you wanting my attention or?
No. After we address this motion, we can return to the last one just for a bit of housekeeping, just to clean them up, okay?
Okay, I'll just read my statement on this that I'm required to read. Since I have a remote interest in the contract and I'm sorry. I'm required to disclose to the Board that I'm a member of the Anaheim YMCA Board of Directors. I'm required to disclose to the board that I'm a member of the Anaheim YMCA Board of Directors. To be noted in the minutes, and so I will abstain from voting on this matter. Thank you.
Just. All right, thank you, Board Member, Board Clerk Philbeck. For that, we'll go ahead and any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Trustee Relis.
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez.
Aye.
Board Clerk Philbeck.
I will abstain.
I'll vote aye, that passes three zero with one abstention. And just as a clarification, I was voting aye on the consent calendar balance, item eight. Was that sufficient? Thank you for that, Dr. Downing. I forgot to vote on that last one. That takes us to item nine, our action calendar. Item A is a superintendent's office. It is recommended the Board of Education receive for first reading revisions to the board, to the following board policies and administrative regulations. A Board Policy three, one, one, zero, transfer of funds.
So moved, Relis.
Second Alvarez.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Trustee Relis.
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez.
Aye.
Board Clerk Philbeck.
Aye.
Also vote aye, passes four zero, takes us to item nine. A two, it is recommended the Board of Education approve an agreement between this district and Centus First Aid and Safety. Forty three twenty East Miraloma Avenue, Anaheim, California, nine two eight zero seven, to provide CPR and. Other first aid training to district employees. This fee for this service shall not exceed three thousand fifteen dollars. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll take the second. No, I'll take the second. Philbeck.
All right, so moved by Trustee Alvarez and seconded by Board Clerk Philbeck. Any discussion?
How many people will they be providing this training for?
Tracy.
This would be for the twenty seven remaining safety assistants that we hired.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Thank you, Ms. Golden. Roll call vote. Trustee Relis.
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez.
Aye.
Board Clerk Philbeck.
Aye.
Also vote aye, passes four zero. Takes us to item nine. To B Educational Services, there are none. Item C, Selpa, there are none. Item D, Human Resources. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the new job description and recruitment for coordinator, facilities, planning and construction. This position shall be on range twenty two of the classified management salary schedule. Is there a motion?
So moved, Relis.
Thank you, Trustee Relis.
Second, Philbeck.
Second by Board Clerk Philbeck. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. Trustee Relis.
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez.
Aye.
Board Clerk Philbeck.
Aye.
Also vote aye, passes four zero. No, okay. That takes us to item two. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the appointment of employee number zero, five, two, six, two, zero, two, one. Dash zero, one, to the position of principal effective date to be determined. Is there a motion?
So moved Alvarez.
Second, Relis.
Do you have some motion and a second? A discussion seeing none, board roll call vote will take Trustee Relis.
Aye.
Trustee Alvarez.
Aye.
Board Clerk Philbeck.
Aye.
Also vote aye, passes four zero. Now, Dina Mellon will read a statement for us.
Thank you very much. Congratulations go out to Sandra Bartoldus. Sandy began with AESD in nineteen ninety seven when she was hired as a classroom teacher at Price School. And later served as a curriculum coach. Sandy is completing her nineteenth year in AESD and is currently the vice principal at Orange Grove School. The site Sandy will be assigned to will be announced very soon and she will officially begin her position as AESD principal on July first. Congratulations to Sandy.
All right, congratulations, Sandy. That takes us to item E Administrative Services, there are none. Item ten is our board discussion. This is board member activities related to school business. Trustee Relis.
All right, so. First, I want to go ahead and just say that on the. Where am I? Oh, the twentieth of this month, it was nice because of the fact that I went to a. Retiree of the Anaheim Elementary School District's birthday party. And it was awesome because of the fact that there were so many of the faculty and staff from. Sunkist as well as Lincoln there, both of which are schools in my area. And it was cool to really just interact with them. The thing that's really cool about it as well is it just showed how small our community is because of the fact that there were. Two former Brose presidents, and Brose is the organization I was a founder of in two thousand nine. Many of our parents that I work with on a regular basis in Anaheim Union High School District were there. It was just awesome and just really nice to see everyone in an informal setting. But just really celebrating with one another. One of our beloved retirees from Anaheim Elementary School District. I also, on the twenty fifth, was able to visit two school sites. I checked out Roosevelt and Orange Grove, Principal Pulaski, as well as Dr. Munoz. They went and toured me around the school. You know, at Roosevelt, it's interesting because of the fact that the number of students back at that school site right now, since it's still located. Over at the Key Campus is still pretty low. And especially in comparison to a lot of the other schools. But I feel strongly that that's going to be changing once they open up their beautiful new school in the fall. And that's very, very exciting. And then for Orange Grove, it was interesting because, you know, they share the campus, but you go across that line and all the classrooms are packed and whatnot. And you're like, this is crazy. But once again, lots of great things taking place there. Shout out to Dr. Marokin, as well as I'm super excited about the vice principal, Sandy Bartoldus. We were talking about it earlier and honestly, like it was just great and it really. Warms my heart to see someone who has worked in our district for so long. And really held a lot of different roles and whatnot, become a principal, very well deserving. And whatever school site she ends up at, I'm certain she's going to be a success. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Relis. Trustee Alvarez.
Thank you. I want to start off on May nineteenth, I attended the induction colloquium that we have yearly for our teachers that are in induction. This year we had everyone who was in year two because we. We thought we, due to the pandemic, the hiring was different, right? So it's kind of a little different of a situation. So these are teachers who went through induction program and finished through with the guidance of. A teacher that was their, kind of like their advisor, right? So it was kind of great to see that they were able to survive all of that, even through a pandemic and through digital learning, right? So kudos to those teachers. They, I think, had the hardest. Couple of years ever in teaching and the history of teaching of all time. So we really do appreciate them sticking through that. And if they can make it through that, they can teach anywhere and to teach anything with anything and anywhere. So it's just like one of those things where just, I couldn't imagine being a first or second year teacher, trying to survive what we just did. So a lot of admiration to them and their advisors. And then I just want to give a shout out to Susan and Tammy and everyone on the team from HR who puts this together and supports the program and makes it. Functional and and actually practical for our teachers, right? So it's not like we're just putting them through the motion. So it's really great to see that always unfold. And there's always a lot of thought and love and effort put into these presentations that they do for our teachers. And they show them that we really do care for our teachers and their development here in Anaheim Elementary. And then on the, yesterday on the twenty fifth, I actually was able to view one of these scholar talks that we've been presenting on YouTube. It's our students have, they're doing like some videos where they're just giving some personal perspectives on something they wrote. And so it was really just great to see our kids engaging and having the opportunity to be on video and being recorded and showcased on YouTube. I think it's, I'm sure it's really exciting for them and their families to be part of that. So I do appreciate everyone who took part in putting those together and streaming them live or streaming them not live, but streaming them on YouTube. And then I just want to say thank you to everyone who retired, all the retirees. We really do appreciate your service to this community. Obviously, we can't do this job without all the educators and the support staff that make everything function behind the scenes as well. So congratulations and I hope you have a great retirement and you're able to relax finally and go wherever you want, do whatever you want. Congratulations. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Trustee Alvarez. Board Clerk Philbeck.
Okay, here we go. It's been a really busy couple of weeks, so I really did try to condense this. But there was the California School Board Association Regional Caucus Meeting and Delegate Assembly. And I'm a delegate for region fifteen, so I did attend that. It stretched. It started Friday with our budget revision seminar. And all the experts breaking down the implications for public schools. And then it proceeded all day Saturday from morning until about four o'clock. And then also some great breakout sessions on Sunday. So I will just give the condensed report of what. And this facilitates this, a lot of information. This, this is attended by hundreds and a lot of the discussion is sharing our own mutual concerns and considerations. And it actually, what I found is we're all kind of on the same page. There's a lot of talk regarding, of course, the funding, the new and established and the budget and the financial issues. With most connected to the pandemic, of course, and the challenging times over the past fourteen months and that we have ahead. We discussed how we'll use the state and federal one time funding to support student achievement throughout the academic year. And a lot of conversation about professional development, what support we will have in place or offering for our staffs. It included utilizing community partnerships to also enhance student and family situations. Various forms of programs we talked about for continued online learning or homeschooling. And we discussed our return to campus protocols. There's concern over the challenges we'll face, but it was pretty much the opinion of everyone that we all have great protocols in place, especially AESD. And along with that, we will all need to be prepared to adjust those protocols. On what we actually see, what our circumstances in reality is going to be in the new school year. Because we don't know exactly, we hope, but we don't know. So everyone's ready, but prepared to adjust. There was a huge emphasis, as I mentioned before, on the social and emotional well being of students and family and staff. As we also saw in reflected in our Extended Learning Opportunities Plan. A lot of the districts are very, this was a big, big topic for the whole weekend. And of course, putting measures in place to recognize and address any lingering traumas that remain from the pandemic. Most districts are going back to full traditional learning for the next school year. And we discussed how we're all struggling with the uncertainty, morale, mental health, and making sure our students keep moving ahead in their learning. Lots of discussion on mental health support. So I was happy to report a lot when called upon and asked our opinion of the great things that. Were doing at AESD and gave me an opportunity to share that. And I was really, really proud to do that. It was an honor to do that. And I think thanks to our superintendent and cabinet. And all the staff were, we got it going on here. We're doing pretty good. I was very proud to represent us in that capacity and in those discussions. I attended the YMCA ribbon cutting, which was very exciting. It's for the new community complex at fourteen twenty two West Broadway. If you haven't, it's over by Ross. If you haven't been by, go check it out. Soccer fields are in, the restrooms, phase one is done, and we are heading into phase two. Which going to include the learning kitchens, a gym and basketball courts. And we're on our way. So it's going to be a great facility. It already is shaping up to be. And we're really proud of that at the Y. I also attended the induction colloquium. So I'd just like to say congratulations to everyone who completed their two year program. They did it during a pandemic. I think everybody should have a T shirt or something that says that says that I did this. You know, I mean, there's never been. A group or a class that has ever had to do that during a pandemic. So congratulations to them and also thank you to the support providers, the teacher mentors, everyone that puts that together. It's just an exceptional program and some really greatness comes out of it. So the Orange County School Board Association Virtual Seminar, which again was a lot of budget stuff from the May revision. So I'll just leave that there. That was another hour and a half of budget. I, the parent advisory committee, which I just love, it was the last meeting. And we did talk about the preschool summer camps that are going to be at the nine locations. June fourteenth through July second, I believe. Mary, correct? Three hours. And this is a great group. They've remained dedicated and diligent throughout this entire year in these Zoom meetings and they've stayed together. So they're a great group and I just really appreciate that everyone stayed committed through such a challenging year. I also caught two days. I wasn't able to do it today, but yesterday and Monday, I caught the student scholar talks broadcast on YouTube. And it was just, it was great. It was great. And you know, my heart went out to them because you could tell some of them were really nervous. But what a great experience to get up and do that. And even if you stumble a little bit, you know, there's somebody to get you back on track. And there's just such a learning experience that, and I'm sure that it's a real confidence builder. And Dr. Grace, who was the moderator, was it? Laura, it was Laura, Laura Houston. Okay, so.
Just to note, they are live.
Yes.
It's a broadcast, so it's exciting.
I could not have done as well as they did. And when some of them, there were a few pauses, you know, they recovered. They recovered and they just got right back on track. And so thank you to Laura also for just having. She was very, she's so kind and she's just so sweet and she just. Yes, they showed perseverance. They really did. And so Laura, thank you because. She was just great. She just kept everything moving and you could tell she was just a rock for them when they were speaking. And I just loved that. So there was the final PTA council meeting of the year. So huge thank you to the dedicated group who has also kept just this massive undertaking of. Of things that all, everything that the PTA does, which there's lists and lists and lists. They kept it all going through the pandemic. And I can say that this is a group I'm really, really looking forward to getting back into this boardroom or wherever we meet again. Together in the next school year because there's, there's an energy in that room that is amazing. And it's just, I love to be part of that. So thank you to all of our PTA council board. For all the work that they did this year and good luck to the next ones coming in. And then again, the Orange County Department of Education had an hour and a half long budget workshop. I'm just going to leave that right there. You got a lot of budget. And today, the YMCA, we had another budget meeting and I'll just leave that there. So congratulations to the retirees. Thank you for all the many years of service compared to, I think there was thirty, is there thirty three? And if you add all that up, that's a lot of years of service to this district. We're so grateful. Sorry, there couldn't be a whammy this year, but we wish you the best. And hope that life just holds a lot of wonderful, happy opportunities for you from this point on. And I'll just close. I just wanted to read one regarding the California School Board Association. It's with the deepest sadness that CSBA shares news of the death of former CSBA. Two thousand and twenty one President Suzanne Kitchens. Suzanne passed quietly with her family on Sunday. May twenty third, just two weeks after she resigned her post as CSBA president due to health issues. And it's characteristic of Suzanne's dedication to children that she worked on their behalf nearly until her final day. She was really a great lady. So I would just like to say we're very saddened about that. And to thank you for listening to my report. I appreciate it. And that concludes.
Thank you, Board Clerk Philbeck, and thank you for bringing that to our attention regarding Ms. Kitchens. Now her loss will be felt at CSBA. So thank you very much. For my report, beginning on May fifteenth, I attended the YMCA ribbon cutting with Clerk Philbeck as well. On that great event. May nineteenth, I also attended the induction colloquium. I do want to thank also, as been mentioned already, the mentors, all of our staff who help us with that program and to continue that going as strong as it is. Thank all of those teachers who survived and thrived throughout the past year. For choosing AESD. for choosing AESD to be the district of their choice, where they wanted to influence all of our students and help our students to grow and to learn and build that community with them. I also, as I mentioned during that meeting, we're not planning to just parachute you into a classroom in the fall. We want to continue that support. So please let us know here at the district how we can continue to support you. But thank you for all of your hard work, dedication, and the perseverance that you showed overcoming that. Yesterday, I attended, or I toured Ponderosa Elementary, again, just to follow up on how things are going there in the classrooms with our students, the systems that we have in place. I was able to tour kind of the other half of the campus I didn't get to last time. I want to thank Dr. Moreno for showing me around. Once again, I just unexpectedly popped in, as I'm apt to do sometimes. And she showed me around sixth-grade classes all the way down to TK and the systems that are in place, the students are following all the protocols. There was this, one thing that I thought was a little hilarious was there's this rope that the kindergartners use that have loops on it just to maintain that six-foot distance whenever they're going down the hallway together. So there are all these different processes in place and protocols that the students have really adapted to. And there's been no kind of issues with that, it seems. So it was very reassuring. I was happy to see that, that our staff, they're doing a great job. I was able to see some of the counselors, the awesome counselors there, the classified staff, some of the kind of trying to keep the interruptions to a minimum, but seeing all of our SLPs assessing the students as I'm going through the hallways. So overall, it was another great job, and it's indicative of our amazing district. So I know that that's happening at every campus. We're all overcoming those challenges, so I appreciate all the work that our staff at every level is doing. So thank you. And I also wanted to congratulate again Ms. Bartoldus on her principalship that she's earned. And, you know, Orange Grove is a school in my area, so that is, you know, big shoes to fill there. So I also want to congratulate the pool of applicants that we had, because there were a lot of internal applicants that we had for the position. I want to remind everybody who didn't get chosen to not be discouraged. We still, we value you and your input and your hard work that you give to the district every day, day in and day out. And, you know, unfortunately, there was just, there was only one slot that was available this time. But don't be discouraged. There will be more opportunities, and we really want to foster that growth, and we appreciate that you want to invest and you actually applied for this position. And so thank you very much. That will conclude my remarks, and we will move to item 11, Future Agenda Items, beginning with Board Member Relis. Seeing none, Board Member Alvarez. Board Clerk Philbeck. I have no future agenda items either. That will take us to item 12, our adjournment, our next regular.
Yeah, may I have a point of personal privilege real quick?
Sure.
I just want to say that, you know, when school let out on March 13, you know, all of us had to separate as well, and all of us all went virtual. And I just want to give a special shout out today because our trustee, our fellow trustee, Mr. Juan Alvarez, is back with us today, and that means a lot. And I'm very thankful for that, because Dr. McCollus was here last time. So the gang's all back, and that makes me super happy. So I just want to take this moment of personal privilege to say, welcome back, Trustee Alvarez, and we're super excited to have you back in person.
All right, welcome back. So next board meeting, all five of us will be in the same room. That's what we're going for. All right, thank you for bringing that up, Trustee Relis. So with that, on that note, we will adjourn our meeting. Our next regular board meeting is Wednesday, June 9, and we will adjourn the meeting here at 8:27 PM. Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone. Thank you for tuning in.
Thank you.